Welcome, everyone. This is the Haldane Board of Education Annual Reorganization Meeting. And at this time, I'd like to ask you to join me and rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Clements.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Here.
Trustee Hammond.
Here.
Trustee Parr.
Here.
Trustee Schwartz.
Here.
You got demoted. At this time, we need to issue or administer the oath of office to Peggy Clements, who was re-elected at the annual district meeting on May 17th to a three-year term, which will end on June 30th, 2020. So Peggy, if you'd like to read the oath of office, I'll have you sign the book.
Do you want to look through that mic? Or are you going to speak?
You can stay at your own mic, if you like, and I'll just come up.
Can I sit in here?
Yeah.
I, Margaret Clements, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Haldane Central School District Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Now, if you would just sign on that line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I guess we should note that Dr. Bowers may be joining us. She is at the New Tech Network.
Staff development.
Staff development in St. Louis. I was trying to remember exactly where. I'm sorry, yes, I should have mentioned she's in transit, and we may try to connect with her through FaceTime. At this time, I'd like to ask for a nomination for president of the Board of Education.
I have a nomination. I'd like to nominate Laura Hammond to be president of the Board of Education.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
One second. Okay. Are there any other nominations? No? Okay. All in favor for the nomination of Laura Hammond as president of the board?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations. Now, you get to say the oath. You get to say the oath of office. Do you want the paper? It's in the board docs if you want it. Well, you can say the oath of office first.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Haldane Board of Education President according to the best of my ability.
Good. Thank you. Now, keep a sign on that line, please. Thank you. Okay. And the meeting is yours.
Thank you. Okay. So I'll take over from here, I guess. Thank you. I would like to call for a nomination for the election of vice president.
I'd like to nominate Peggy Clements.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sir, you have to be... She has to say sworn in again?
Yes.
Sorry. You've got to say it again.
Yeah, I can't. Let me go ahead and do it now?
Please, yes.
I do solemnly affirm that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Haldane Board of Education Vice President according to the best of my ability.
Okay. You want to sign the book?
This is a really special book that Julia has here. Do you want to tell people what it is?
Well, it's the oath book that goes back to 1956, from when Mabel Merritt was the clerk. Did we sign that as trustees when we came on? No, because we didn't know where the book was, but you signed paper.
We signed paper.
But it must have just got... I've signed it, so it must have gotten lost somewhere and then refound?
No, you signed it after it was found.
Oh. That's nice. Well, I really just would like to say, if I may, that I would really... I'm very happy that Laura and Peggy are willing to take on these roles. I think they're both going to do a really great job, and that... I don't know if the public realizes this, but the role of president is exponentially more responsibility than the rest of the trustees. I'm saying this after she's been... She accepted the nomination.
I purposely didn't put together the list of duties, but I had a clear indication of...
I didn't want her to say no.
Jen and I have worked together a lot over the past couple of months, and I'm very grateful for all the hard work that you've given to the board, and I know a lot more time and effort goes in as being president, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck to Laura. But I'd also really like to thank Jen. I've told you personally, but I'll say it publicly. I think you've been a great president. I really appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you so much.
I'd say it's a pleasure. Most times, it's been a pleasure, I'll say.
I'll say of all the years on the board, during your presidency, was there so much change in top administration? So really, of all the times, you probably had the roughest of all the changes that went through, so...
Thanks, Evan.
Good job.
Yeah, well, it's a team effort. The board president is in the hot seat, for sure, but it's a team effort, so thanks, guys.
Okay. Thanks. Moving on, Julia, is this you? The appointment of the recommended action. The Board of Ed appoints the following officers of the Board of Ed?
Yes.
This is the appointment of the district clerk, Clerk Procthem, district treasurer, deputy treasurer, tax collector, and claims auditor. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education appoints the following officers of the Board of Education effective July 5th, 2017, through July 2018, Annual Reorganization Meeting at the stipends noted below. Okay. And I get a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thanks, ladies, for continuing on in these very important positions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think we're done with all the reorg part of the meeting, and you don't have Dr. Bowers online yet. Okay, so we're going to just move Dr. Bowers' report until later on in the meeting, and hopefully she joins us. If not, between myself and Jen and Ann, I think we can get through her items.
Do we even say for the public that her plane was delayed, that we had planned for her to join by FaceTime? Or did...
She just did.
Okay. I didn't know if we said that she was delayed-delayed, like it was outside of her control.
Right. Unfortunately, her plane was delayed, but we'll see, hopefully, if she can connect. If not, not a big deal. We've got things pretty much under control. Okay. Moving on to the information reports. We do need to approve them this meeting. So this is...
We do?
Wait. These are the... No, May... Oh, the May treasurer's report, but okay. Right, right, right. Next meeting.
And so you're going to approve them in the next meeting in August? Okay.
Okay.
You'll probably have more in August, since there's only one...
Should I dial her up?
Since there's only one per month, one meeting per month, you'll probably be doubled up for a little while, because the audit's going on, and you don't have the expenditure report, because I'm still making adjusting entries for that, for year-end.
Okay. Even though the year-end was June 30th, we're okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So those are there for us to review, and... Bless you. Bless you. I think we'll just keep going until you get her consent agenda minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to personnel, consent agenda personnel. There's a few resignations. Diana.
Hello?
Sorry. Let me just finish the consent agenda.
Sure.
Sorry. This is a kind of... Hi, Diana. I'm just going to finish up.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Diana.
Hello.
Are you still in the airport?
Yes, we just got off the plane about five minutes ago.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks for dialing in. I'm just going to finish consent agenda quickly, and then we'll go back to your items. So, sorry, I forgot to do the motion for the consent agenda. May I get a motion?
Motion?
One second.
Okay. So there were a few resignations. We would like to thank Kathy Serino and Meredith Vasta for their time and dedication here at Haldane, and we wish them well in their future endeavors. Dave Darty's leave of absence is so that he can take on the eighth grade ELA, and the point of the leave of absence was so that, for tenure purposes, he wouldn't have to restart his tenure. So he's taken...
Elementary and middle school are in different tenure tracks. So when he hops to middle school, so there's just a little breathing room for his position.
So that was the clarification that I asked about earlier.
Do we have any update on the two unforeseen resignations? Not unforeseen, but... Because, right, well, I guess they were unforeseen.
You mean, like, replacing them?
Yeah, like, by September?
I don't know. You'd have to ask Diana about that.
Diana?
I'm sorry. I didn't quite hear what you said.
You want to ask him?
Evan's going to ask what he wanted to ask.
Do we have any movement or expectation that we'll have replacements for the music and special ed teacher that just resigns?
Yeah, well, actually, for the special ed teacher, we're actually keeping an eye on the enrollment in some of the elementary classrooms, and if we don't have an increase in either... We're looking at the, now, the first and the second grades, and if we don't have an increase in either of those, we may actually redeploy staffing and not hire the special ed position. But we have to watch to see what happens throughout the summer as far as the enrollment for first and second grade. We've already started looking for the music. I know that Julia started immediately, once we knew that Kathy was moving to New Jersey, and so that's begun. And so hopefully, we'll have something on the docket for you in August.
Thank you for that clarification. On here, we also have appointment of coaches for 2017 and '18, and I just wanted to clarify one item. We're appointing for JV boys and girls soccer positions, but I got further clarification today after, I think, the entire high school community received a letter from Mr. Solomon regarding the numbers. So we're appointing them preemptively, because we're still unsure of numbers. If we do have enough kids to put together a JV team as well as a varsity team, then these coaches will be assigned to the JV. If the numbers are not there, we'll probably do something similar to what we did last year, make them assistants to the varsity teams. So I just wanted to clarify that for those two positions.
I didn't notice until now, but why isn't there a varsity boys soccer coach?
These were the open...
Oh, okay.
...items, but the boys does have a soccer coach assigned.
All right.
So these were the open positions. So... Oh, we didn't do a...
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry. I am, like, totally off balance here with... I'm trying to get... Yeah, I'm completely out of rhythm. We're going to go back to you, Diana, for your superintendent's report.
Okay, well, before I give my superintendent's report, I guess, since you're the one that's running the meeting, do I say congratulations to Laura?
Yes. Yes. So, yes, while you were landing, I became president, and Peggy became vice president.
Congratulations. Glad to get caught up there, so, yes.
Thank you.
So, just so everybody knows, we weren't quite... We weren't supposed to be quite as tight as we were for this meeting. The plane that was supposed to leave at 2:15 today ended up leaving at 4:45. So we sat on the tarmac for a couple of hours or a few hours, and that's why I'm just running into the airport now, so I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so a couple of items. One, an exciting item, it's a long time in coming, and we say congratulations to the owners, but we did sell the James Pond land. We have the check in hand, and it's going into now the account that we'll be paying off the field, and that was earmarked to pay off the athletic field. So we have new owners on that land, and we can put the money where it was promised, so we want to congratulate the new owners. Right now, we are in St. Louis, Missouri, and we are at the New Tech Conference, and there will be 18 of us that will be attending, and people are coming in at all different times today. We have some that are coming in as late as midnight tonight. And then the conference starts tomorrow, so we'll be here some through Sunday night and some through Monday morning. I will also be... We have our... All our new educators are going to be coming, as well as our new principals, and so this way, when they start the year, they feel a level of comfort and an understanding about what we're doing as far as the deeper learning and the inquiry-based learning experience. So they'll be training for the next four to five days. So that's exciting. We want to remind people that we will not have a Board of Education meeting now until the 17th of August, and we hope everybody enjoys their summer plans. We will have... It will be Thursday, not Tuesday, but Thursday, the 17th of August, at 7 o'clock in the band music room. And at that point, we'll be doing things like setting the tax rate, which is required, so we can send out the tax bills at the beginning of the school year, and we will conduct other routine business. And hopefully, by that point, we will have a full docket, and we'll be ready to start the school year early September. During the August month, we will also be, as we have for the last many years, we will be conducting our administrative retreat, and the administrators will all come together and plan and brainstorm, and for a three-day period, it'll start on the 23rd of August and end on the 25th. And so we will be sharing some of the information at the meeting in early September, and we can talk about some of the content that was discussed at that point. Also, some of the other things that, before we start the year, we will have a new staff induction program, which will occur on Wednesday, the 30th of August, and we will be welcoming Karen Lynch, our new physics teacher, Angela Bronco, our new art teacher, Teri Echus, our library media specialist. We finally have a real librarian in the library. Elena Weed, which will be teaching fourth grade, John Bernstein, at this point slated to teach fifth grade, David Wallach, our new elementary principal, and Mary Ann Selke, our new middle school principal. So they will all be joining us and begin the year with us. We'd also like to remind the board and let the public know that the Board of Education Retreat, the first part of it, will occur on the 28th of August from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Winter Hill and Garrison. And so that's what's on the docket for the rest of the summer.
Great. Well, thank you very much for bringing us up to speed, and I think we're going to let you go, so you can get to where you've got to get to, and we wish you a wonderful time and bring back lots of knowledge, and we look forward to hearing all about it in August.
Thank you. Wish everyone a healthy and happy summer until we see you next time.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Diana. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You, too.
Bye-bye.
How about any communication from the public? None? Okay. Unfinished business. So last time we met, the approval of the... Oh, sorry. Code of Conduct. I thought you wanted me to say something. Sorry. We had a couple of questions about the bell, painting of the bell, and was that in the right spot in the code of conduct? And it has now since been updated and put in the appropriate location. It's... I think we felt it was in a little bit too harsh of a location, but we are now... I'm trying to find the section that they put it in. It's more disciplinary in terms of...
Engage in conduct, that is disorderly, is the headline.
Right.
Yeah, that makes much more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of the violent...
Right.
That does make sense.
So I think that was the only change that was made, from what I could tell.
I think the other one, I don't know if it's...
But we had them.
Yeah. I think that was the only...
Yeah, I'm just looking at them. They're not earmarked, so... Yeah, I do think that was the only one.
That was the one.
But we were reminded last time that it's a living, breathing document, so we're... I think we need to approve it, but the approval is just so that it can keep being in existence, right? So it's something that can shift and change throughout the year if needed.
And we had some really, I mean... Really substantive changes, I thought, like really meaningful changes last year. So I know this committee, it's a standing...
Yeah.
This committee is always talking about this kind of stuff, so that makes sense.
Okay. You ready to read the recommendation? Okay, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the amendments to the Haldane Central School District Code of Conduct for the 2017-2018 school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Policy review, non-resident. This is the same policy that we read last time. So at this point, I think if there's, you know, no additional comments, I think we should move forward, right?
Yeah, I think the only thing that we mentioned, and I feel like I think I was the one who mentioned it, but I think we all agreed, that we're just going to change the wording, and it's crossed out and changed here, that allowing a child to stay in the district without paying tuition, we wanted a little stronger language on that, that it is up to the Board of Education to approve it, but they changed the word from "special circumstances" to "extenuating circumstances," just a little firmer to let him know that it was... It does need to be extenuating.
Right.
It is not, just because.
Right.
Yeah.
We were pretty clear about that.
Yeah. So that was shifted, although, I mean, there still is an application process that we would... But it just makes it a little clearer.
Ken, with the student... I was thinking about the, with the student representative, just... Hopefully, it just gets out there, it's crystal clear, that the student representative, the only information that the student is privy to and conversations is privy to is anything that anyone from the general public would have access to, through the public board docs, through being able to come to a meeting and voice an opinion about any issue, like anyone could do that. So hopefully, it just...
So that's item seven, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's...
The public agendas is all they would be receiving. Did you want to make it even more clear in the policy?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, no. No, I'm saying clear when it gets out to the public.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay? That we don't get phone calls saying, "Are kids now going to have access to resume?" Like, just, you know, in this... You know, we've had some misinformation issues, so hopefully, that it's clear that the student rep is just getting access to anything that anyone could get in the public, and his voice... The person's voice would be the same as anyone else's voice, who would want to come to a board meeting at any time.
That's right.
Great.
So, just, yeah.
Thanks for coming.
It's a really good point, because really, with the exception of having the opportunity to participate in an orientation, right? We would give this person some kind of orientation. With the exception of that, everything that's on the list of duties and responsibilities are things that anybody can do.
Right.
So, well, is that not true? What I wanted to say was, but the... What I understand is us making really explicit how much we want student... It's going beyond that by saying, "Well, we really, really want student representation on the board." But maybe I'm misinterpreting the point.
They would go back to their stakeholders, right?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
And get input.
I think the act... I mean, the technical difference is, though, that we don't need to allow public conversation with us. Like, we offer comment, public comment section, but that is up to the board president, whether, you know, how that public comment gets made, if it gets made, when it gets stopped. You know, we're not obligated to even have it. There's not necessarily a discussion with the person. Could be, might not be, right? It could just be comments. And so I think one actual difference is that we're actually inviting them to be at the table, to have conversation and discussion with us. And although I think our board does as good a job as we can as inviting conversation with other people, I don't think that's technically... That is a technical difference.
No, that's an important clarification, so I appreciate that.
But we also did put in, in there, which I think was very smart, was the president does have the right... If, for whatever reason, they wanted to just shut down the student representative during a meeting...
Yes.
That could be shut down.
That's right.
So even that representative could be told, "You know what? Your comments... You're done with your comments."
Yes.
So that was a good...
Yeah.
So even they have restriction on what they can say.
Right. And we did add that they... This student has to be approved by the principal.
That's right.
Yeah.
So I think there's... It's an important job. We want the person to take it seriously, and we hope it benefits...
It will.
It will.
It will.
So... Are you ready to adopt all three policies, then?
I am.
You guys ready?
Okay.
And the fundraising? Nobody has any more concerns about the fundraising?
I feel like we've seen this fundraising...
A lot of times.
At least six or seven times.
Well, but it changed a lot between many of those.
Yes, it did. It did. But I did check, and this is the last version from June 20th.
Yes.
There haven't been any changes since we looked at it last.
Yeah.
I think the best thing to do is to go in with it and see if it needs more tweaking, but I think it's... I think it's good, but it could need more tweaking.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, I think, an improvement over where we started.
Yes.
Right? More specific, clearer, and, yeah, might need to adjust as we go, but...
And thank you, ladies, for your work on... So are you ready for me to read a recommendation? Okay. So the recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt policies 7130 for non-resident students, 7450 fundraising, and the student representatives to the board policy. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Okay. This is the CSE, CPSC, recommendations, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations below on the... Of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, as indicated.[1754.12]
as indicated.
Get a motion?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you want to talk about this or do you want me to just read the recommendation? Because it says everything in the recommendation. Okay, this is a recommendation to change some of the meeting dates for the Board of Education meetings and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the rescheduling of their February 20th, 2018 workshop meeting to Tuesday, February 27th, 2018, due to mid-winter recess, and the April 17th, 2018 workshop meeting to Tuesday, April 24th, 2018, in order to correspond with the Bozies budget and trustee election.
Great, may I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, um, this is approve, an approval of resolution authorizing the continuation of Board of Education policies and bylaws and Board Policy 6110, Code of Ethics for All School Personnel. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution to wit, resolved that the Board of Education of the Haldane Central School District, 15 Craig Side Drive, Cold Spring, New York, hereby authorizes the continuation in force of the Board of Education policies and bylaws adopted and/or amended as of June 30, 2017, including Board Policy 6110, Code of Ethics for All School Personnel, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education policies and bylaws hereby shall be subject to continuing review and shall be amended as necessary in accordance with procedures as set forth in the bylaws, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. May I get a motion?
So what is that?
Yeah, I was, but we need to have a motion first, right?
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
Second.
So the discussion, um, I guess we're updating, we have to do this every year, is that? Or was there an update to the policy 6110? We have to renew it every year?
So there's no changes in it?
No, this is a standard resolution, um, that every year we renew the policy manual, but letting it be known that it's under review and that changes will be made during the year, but as it stands today, you're renewing them in force.
And we basically renew them anyway, all the time, as we just were looking at policies, but...
It's a reorg meeting, you're saying that you still believe and support the policies.
And this one policy that's singled out, 6110, is that always singled out? Or is there a reason why it's singled out this year?
I believe that one is always singled out because it's a school personnel. Just to be in compliance, that we have a school personnel policy. We have to let that be known and instead of having it separately, we just incorporate it.
I don't know why I don't remember, but it's, we did it last year, yeah. I guess you, I feel like at this point I'm starting to remember the things we do every year, but I, but yeah, so it is always called out.
Okay. Okay.
I'm looking, I put it in the meta-search, 6110, and it was exactly, if you look at the agenda from 2015 and 2016, it's called out 6110 as well, so...
Yeah, I think it's because there's no separate, um, rulebook for personnel. They have to follow these guidelines. So, that's the deal. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next is the authorization to renew the Audit Committee Char, Committee and Charge for 2017-2018 and the recommended action is that the Board of Education reauthorizes the Audit Committee and Charge as presented for 2017-2018.
May I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? So... Is this where we...
No, the next one.
Oh, this is the next one.
We just have to create, authorize.
And this is singled out because there's an ongoing audit.
Okay.
Instead of waiting until September, the next meeting, when you usually do committees.
Right.
Otherwise, there, there would not be one for the audit.
Okay, so may I get a motion?
I think we did that.
Oh.
We just need an all-in-favor.
All those in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Okay, this is the one that I was, uh...
So, right, so I think that, um, maybe what you should do is have a discussion about who would like to be on the Audit Committee and then I would read the recommended action and include the names of who wants to be on the Audit Committee.
Anne, do you see, I'm sorry, do you see the, the committee having to get together over the summer at all, before September?
No, the next, it would be in October, but for communication purposes, you know, during, during the audit, if there's anything to share, then they would need a liaison.
Okay, so who would like to be on the Audit Committee?
Well, I haven't done it yet, so I can... And I don't mind, I don't mind staying on it unless Evan is...
No, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Evan's home. That Audit Committee has been his home.
I feel like I understand it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a selfish thing for me. Like, I, I actually do enjoy it, but because when I say selfish, meaning like, they're always at night, the meetings, and it's always a committee I can give 100% to, um, because of the timing of it. So that's why I like being on that committee. No...
Right?
Well, no, and I think it's good, actually, then, for Margaret to do it instead of me just because I think being on the, I mean, I remember especially the first year that I was on the Audit Committee, the Bonadilla does really such a nice job of really laying everything out and then we have such smart community members, like really super capable people. There's just, I feel like there's a lot, not a ton, but it's, it's a good committee to be on 'cause you, you really, I mean, we all read it, but it's more in-depth, sort of learning what happens as, with audits, so...
Yeah, it's always been recommended, uh, to me, that new board member, every board member should take a turn on the Audit Committee and as, and as early as possible in your tenure on, on the board because you learn so much about the financials of the district that you can then really apply that knowledge ongoing and you have a forum for questions, you know? So, I mean, I'm, I think that's great.
Yeah, so, uh... Yeah. Thank you.
So, me and Margaret.
Margaret and Evan.
So then the recommended action is that the Board of Education appoints Evan Schwartz and Margaret Parr as, to serve on the Audit Committee for 2017-2018.
May I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's another opportunity for comments from the public.
And just to remember, to the board, we'll be doing our, we'll talk about committees at the retreat, um, so, you know, we can all think through a little bit about where we see ourselves.
Great. Well, uh, since there's no additional communication from the public, I'd like to officially say that this has been a 42-minute meeting, my first as president.
May this be a harbinger of things to come, Laura.
Yeah, I won't cut too easy for us, but, um, thank you for coming and, um, we look forward to seeing you in August, although I believe you may be running that meeting 'cause I'm not gonna be here.
Okay.
But I also share with Laura that it's not necessary that anybody can run a meeting. The vice president does not have to run a meeting, um, so I'm very happy to run it as well. So whatever you're comfortable with.
So, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody.